P. M., and we are in the George M. Room Little Theater at Brockton High School, four seventy, four staff, Brockton, Massachusetts, zero two three zero one. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television or Comcast, on Comcast Channel eight and one oh seven, one H. D. version, and online via this link, W. 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 dot YouTube dot com slash the Brockton Channels. I'll call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. Mr. Vega?
Yeah.
Mrs. Oliver?
Here.
And we have our superintendent and myself as the chair of this subcommittee as well. Agenda number three, item number three, is discussion and potential vote of the F. Y. twenty twenty six school bid number twenty six oh oh one. If Principal McCaskill or Ms. Terry wants to.
Yes, this, good evening, everyone, superintendent, chair, and distinguished members of the school committee. Yeah, this is for a program with youth guidance, which is a Chicago-based organization that has now had roots in Boston regarding student supports. And they're currently at, I believe, three to four schools in Boston. Madison Park was their flagship that started back in two thousand eighteen, and they are now, I believe, at the Albert Holland Technology School, High School of Technology, as well as Charleston, but they are in Cambridge as well as Somerville. And what we are proposed to do is to have them do some work, support work, with fifty five male students and fifty female students, and provide case management, S. E. L. supports, as well as consistent monitoring of their progress. And I can tell from personal experience of really piloting this at Madison Park, the results were tremendous, tremendous. Market improvements, not only with the attitudes with students, but more or less attendance. We saw the metrics, and there may be some of the metrics that they have within the packet that you have, where you saw increases in attendance, and with that increase of attendance, you saw better performance with these students. And so they have really made a commitment where indicated that they would love to be in Brockton, and would have their, have their next, next program run out of here. And the beauty part is that these are full-time employees that are housed here for both the female and male programs, as opposed to a contractor, contracted organization that has people coming in maybe once or twice a week.
If you, I know we received the packet, and there's two different organizations in that packet, if you wanna, which one are you referring?
With youth guidance, youth guidance.
Okay, and we've used their services before?
No, this is a first.
Okay.
I have, I do have experience with them, yes, I do.
Any members have any questions, Ms. Oliver?
Exactly what their work is gonna be detailed, like what type of service working with, like our students, is it like mentor, is like different topics they're gonna be focusing on?
It's all about self, self-improvement, self, self-growth, and more like raising the extreme levels, but most importantly, how are we maturing, becoming men and young women in society today? Lots of mentoring, hands-on mentoring. A lot of the progress monitoring that they do is not only in school, but also outside of school as well. They work with the families as well.
Thank you. I, I was reading, and I do like this program a lot, and I greatly appreciate it that you're investing in our students by bringing more programs that would definitely develop our young men and young ladies to be better, you know, productive member of the society as they move on from Brockton High into their career, but I, this is a great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vega?
So going back to, so going back to the metrics conversation, you know, you mentioned that you saw market improvement in another school environment around attendancy and truancy, like rough estimate, like, I mean, like with the kids that were in there, you seen like, you know, there, there's suddenly a hundred percent attendance?
Well, you're seeing attendance levels which were below seventy percent.
Okay.
And now those students are actually coming over eighty percent of the time. You saw just a massive decrease in the amount of refer, teacher referrals with these students. And so those are, those are things that, you know, really are a testimony to this program with the individuals that are in their leadership, but most importantly, with the individuals that they hire. They're, they do just second to none with the vetting of who they have in front of our young people.
What about things like student violence and suspensions? Did you see any improvement based on their involvement?
So reduction in those, again, that goes hand in hand with the number of referrals. You know, obviously, students that get referred are the students that are getting suspended on a regular basis. With the same cohorts of young men and young women, you just saw just decreases of the amount of time they were spending with administrators or behavior technicians. And so again, when you're seeing where they're in classrooms more, they're, first of all, they're in school more, then they're in the classrooms more, and you're seeing just a change in attitude as well. And those are things that are definitely pointed out with youth guidance.
Yeah, and my last question is, you know, well, there's two questions. What's the referral process? Like how, like, like how are students being chosen to be paired with, with these youth guidance?
Number, you know, with obviously some recommendations from staff, because you're coming in blind and not knowing students, but they will look at the backgrounds of students, because again, it's only, we can only do fifty-five young men and fifty young women, but you wanna see those students that are really going to take advantage of, of the situation. So these are students with attendance issues, these are students that may have some anger management issues. So they will look, take all these pieces into account with their grades, current situation in school, and then make an assessment. And it's unfortunate, unfortunate that we cannot serve every student, but being at a first year, we'll see what the capacity can look like in subsequent years.
That's fantastic. And yeah, like what sort of data will the district be provided, you know, specifically this, this body be provided with? I mean, what's nice is that, I mean, while it's that, while we wanna serve more students, the fact that we're only serving a hundred and ten in total, right?
Hundred and five.
Means that we should have very measurable data around attendance, around all sorts of issues, like what, what can we expect, and really, when can we expect to, to hear?
Seeing that, we, we kinda start a little bit late, see, so again, they have to go through, obviously, if this is successful, going through their hiring process of getting their individuals in place, so this year is just getting it up and running. And hopefully that we will have the funding for this to go in subsequent years, and I think you'll definitely see the, with just attendance, referrals, and also performance as well.
Thank you, Principal.
Any other questions? No? I have a couple as well. So one of the things, I mean, Mr. Vega and Mrs. Oliver covered, I do appreciate that we're looking into this and bringing in more staff, more resources for the students, but there are a few things that I still have questions on. One is, were means or methods or requirements did we use to compare these two organizations besides knowing that the youth program, you know, has all these successes and, and whatnot?
It was really myself, Terry, and Janet Landerholm, and here's an actual process that we follow in the student, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, is the city procurement's actual process of going through with the vetting.
Okay. And I'm assuming the youth program had checked more, most of the boxes?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
The, the other question that I had, I went through both of the packets that we received, for the info, healthcare, they list, you know, how many qualified mental health professionals you would get per number of students, and so on and so forth, and how they would be placed, and their pricing for each depending on the number of students and number of mental health professionals they provide. I was curious to know what is the numbers for the youth guidance?
Youth guidance has a full, but I think the one difference, they have a full-time, in-house individual in the school.
One person?
One person.
Okay.
And that's for each program, for each program. The students are split up into two cohorts, they don't meet like fifty-five in, as a group, two cohorts, one of thirty, one of twenty-five, and twenty-five and twenty-five, and they would have their meeting times, but again, they have a dedicated individual who is full-time Monday through Saturday, who'll be here working with students.
Okay. Sounds similar, and we could get, with that, the program also approximately up to two hundred students for, for two mental health professionals. And then price-wise, just, you know, confirming all the details, for the youth guidance, it remains constant throughout F. Y. twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and the other one keeps increasing as we go. Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Vega?
Clarifying question, yeah, because, so I got to visit the websites for both of them, and they're both kinda like in the same area, but it's almost a Venn diagram, right? Because one is like a specialized clinicians group, and one is more of an S. E. L. mentoring group, like, like were we looking for two different things, like?
We were looking for a group that had, had strong roots of experience with students of a similar demographic, which they, youth guidance was just very strong with that. And again, it's, and it's just more than S. E. L., it's that, those mentoring pieces in the, in the wraparound, where they are making contact with families, and I think that's the connective tissue that youth guidance has proven that they could really do.
Thank you.
All set? Any final questions, comments, concerns, Mrs. Oliver?
Are they gonna be working with our adjustment counselors also?
They'll be working with every administrators, school adjustment counselors, any clinicians that we have. It is a very inclusive organization.
And how is the parents gonna be participate? Like what is the parent, like their parts in the whole program?
Making sure they, they can welcome, when they do the home visits, welcome them today.
Okay.
This is not, this is not accusatory, is by no means judgmental as well, it is how we are going to have this holistic approach to support, and that the parents are a partner in this process.
That's a great idea. Definitely a lot of parents left out of a lot of programs. I think this is a great idea to basically go directly to the home and support them, because there's, there might be issues there that we don't know about, and just bringing a new face to it, and just see how we can support them as a community and also as a school, if there's other issues that we find out. But what area of Chicago was, is this based out of?
I, I don't know Chicago well, but that, that's where the, the organization started, and in Boston was a test case for them, how do we branch out? And it has branched out very successfully in Boston, which led to Somerville and Cambridge coming onboard.
That's a great, because we almost have the same population of kids in those areas, so that definitely will work, walk students. Thank you.
Any more questions? No? Do we have a motion?
Motion to award youth guidance with, I'm sorry, to motion to award youth guidance with this, what do we call it?
F. Y. twenty twenty-six school bid.
Bid, yeah. Do I need to state the number as well?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Motion to approve youth guidance as the awarded vendor for the supplemental service program for B. H. S. C. N. T. number twenty-six zero zero one.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Vega, properly second by Ms. Oliver. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Item number four, thank you, other businesses, is there any other businesses pertaining to this subcommittee? Seeing none, item five adjournment, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made properly, second, all those in favor?
Good evening, visitors, and welcome to the meeting of the Brockton School Committee. This is the agenda that will be discussed this evening. Please note that hearing of visitors is included. And if you have a statement or question, please give your name to the secretary. We have several that have signed. I will establish a quorum. Actually, before we say that, in addition to attending this public viewing, the meeting via television Comcast Channel 8, 1071 HD version, and online via this link, the www.com, w dot youtube dot com, the four Brockton channels. And I will establish a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan. Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Mr. Vega.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Yeah.
Superintendent, present myself, Tony, as the vice chair. Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Azak and the mayor and not with us this evening. And can we all please rise and salute our American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice. Thank you. Hearing of visitors pursuant to the school committee policy, each person requesting to speak shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes. Since the period is limited to 15 minutes, a total of five people shall be permitted to speak on a first come, first basis. And the first speaker this evening is Ms. Lori Mason. The mic is yours, Ms. Mason.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Mason. It has come to my attention that Dr. Talahani and her compliance officer, I believe, Kim Tashi, have been cutting jobs left and right, leaving others behind to do two jobs. That is how Dr. Talahani is budgeting. Dr. Talahani calls it restructuring. Now, I messaged a school committee member who said Mike Thomas hired lots of his friends, and Dr. Talahani is just following the audit's recommendation. Yet it doesn't seem that it's... That's what she's doing is cutting Mike Thomas's friends off. It seems to be the low-level paying jobs that are getting cut. I know for a fact that one of the responsibilities of the school committee members is supervising the superintendent, so why aren't you? There's an assistant superintendent of finance who only handled budgets of up to $50 million. Our budget is five times that amount. Why was this woman hired? And I can tell you for a fact, she does not return phone calls. She's not transparent. Dr. Talahani just got a 36K retroactive to her first contract after renegotiating four months after starting. BPS is underperforming requiring assistance. Contributing factors: financial mismanagement, ineffective instruction, which I will speak on at another time, limited support. Thirteen of 23 schools need assistance. School committee just approved the school police contract, who received a very generous contract, that money was taken from other contracts being settled fairly, which is very interesting. I see something very common. You have a lot of the bigwigs, the cushy jobs, makes all the big money. They seem to be all family and friends, okay, that are in these jobs. And I know for a fact, some of them don't know what the heck they're doing in them. Okay? So now, I'm going to go to the paras. The paras need a contract. This expired the end of June. You want to offer them 2%. Are you kidding me? They are the people that are hands-on with the students. You guys talk about everything for the students. They're hands-on. 2%? Really? That is... You're not valuing... You don't value these people. You don't respect them. You don't support them. You don't appreciate them. It proves it by telling them they can only get a 2% raise. Unbelievable. If it wasn't for them, or the teachers, you guys wouldn't be in this position.
Your time is up.
I said what I had to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason. It is duly noted. Next is... Next is Ashby Azola.
Hi. My name is Ashley Azola. I'm a one-to-one life skills paraprofessional at the Baker School. I'm also the mother of four children in this district that attend the Baker, the Ashfield, and one is also a senior at Brockton High. I love this city. I've lived here my whole life, and I wouldn't want to raise my kids anywhere else. I love this district and what it has done for my children, but it's incredibly disheartening to be on this side of what's going on right now. The paras are the backbone of every building in this district. Before I worked here, I worked for the North River Collaborative as a para for many years. My mother was a para professional, and I've known since a very young age that I wanted to work in special education, and this is what I've always wanted to do. This job is not a stepping stone. It's a crucial role in the success and future of our Brockton children. The roles we play, the heart we have for our kids cannot be summed up in a monetary value, but it is incredibly important. This is my fourth year working in the district. I've been a lunch para, and now I work in life skills. And my heart is here in this city and with these kids, but I cannot be quiet in the face of unfair treatment. The further removed you are from the children, the more money you make. But I'm curious. Do you know how to calm a dysregulated child? Do you know what it feels like to stay calm and collected while a child scratches you, bites you, and screams at you, all while knowing that all you want to do is help? Would you know how to help them when they hurt themselves and look to you for regulation and stability? Then come back the next day to do it all again? The emotional toll that this job takes is impossible to measure. We love these children. We are often a voice and an advocate for our students. We're a warm hello, an inside joke, and a sympathetic ear when a student is having a bad day. I bet each para in here right now has their own story of sadness that we bring home when our hearts break for our kids. We buy snacks. We celebrate milestones, and we love and we care, and that's why we're here. So can you in good conscience turn your backs on the people who just want to work, do our best, and take care of these kids? Brockton children matter. They are the future of this city, and they are deserving of caring, qualified, loving, compassionate, dedicated paraprofessionals to assist them in their school day. And that is who you have in this building. And that is who is on your payroll. And that is who you stand to lose if you ignore us. I am here to speak for those of us, and also for those of us who couldn't be here because they have to work extra jobs to make ends meet. But know that we are strong, we won't be quiet, and we won't stop until we are treated with the respect that we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. George Brickhouse.
My name is George Brickhouse, and I do believe that it is said in the Bible and in other passages of faith that if one or more are in the room who believe in the living God, then God is among us. And so I'm saying that because I do believe that there are one or more in this room who believe in the living God. A little bit nervous. It's been a minute since I've been here. For all of you at home, thank you for tuning in to the good, the bad, and the ugly. You've got four people here who should have been too ashamed to run for the school committee after calling for the National Guard to come to Brockton High School. You know who they are. Only Little Rock, Arkansas, and Brockton High have the honor of being high schools where the use of the National Guard is mentioned in Google. Let us not forget what happened in Ohio concerning the use of the National Guard on a college campus. By the way, Donald Trump says hi and thank you for letting your egos come first ahead of the children and the community. And then...
Mr. Brickhouse, I'm going to have to interrupt you and read you number four of our policy.
Can I finish and then you can come back to me?
No, you're not, because I could have escorted out of here.
What do you want to do?
Number four is...
Have the respect that I'm standing here.
After warning reserves the right to terminated speech, but is not constitutionally protected because of the Constitution. Two threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and causes a breach of the
peace and excitement. Is anybody in here going to get violent from what I'm saying?
Of imminent lawless conduct.
Is anybody in here going to want me to finish what I'm saying?
But I...
Why don't you stand up and let me do what I need to do?
The policy states you speak on the matters that is on the agenda.
I am speaking on the matters on the agenda. I am speaking on the matters on the agenda. This is not a personal attack.
This is like the ninth time you come here, the public is.
This is not a personal attack. Maybe to you it's personal, because you ain't got.
You were disrupting.
Is anybody in here gonna get violent for me finishing another fifty seconds of what I've got to say? If you're gonna get violent about it, then stand up and raise your hand.
There's another platform for your grievances.
This is the platform that I'm choosing right now, because it's about the committee.
Officer Mosley, can I have Mr. Brickhouse move, please?
And if I can finish, please, then we can top it off, because it is on, the young lady who was up here prior to me.
That's not, this is not right.
We're not taking personal attacks, so, Mr. Brickhouse, sorry. There's another platform for that.
No, this is not right.
Can I talk to you just a second?
Tony, this is not right.
My, my next paragraph is on. First, now last paragraph, and then you can top off your masturbation of public trust by wanting to give an additional thirty-five thousand dollar raise to the already existing salary of two-hundred-and-seventy thousand of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent, turn down the thirty-five thousand dollars and give it to these people who've been working in their schools.
Mary Littleton?
Yes. Hello. I have, I'm sixty-four years old. I was born in Brockton, educated in Brockton, went to the Ellis Sprett Elementary School, woo-hoo, it's now apartments, went to West Junior High and Brockton High. My husband, same thing. He went to elementary school here, he went to North Junior High. My children were educated here in Brockton. My son is a senior project manager at the MBTA in charge of the bridges and tunnels. He's a geotechnical engineer. He fell in love with Brockton's education. It is who made him. My daughter is a severe sped preschool teacher in Avon with her artistic endorsement. She loves it. And here in Brockton, formed them. But needless to say, none of that could have happened without the paras, who also supported the teachers. They're the, the paras were the ones that pulled the small group instruction and helped the children that might have been falling behind or that needed to be escalated and go further beyond what might, might have been happening in the classroom. You're pulling the right arm of every single classroom if you do not respect them. Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm listening.
I hope you are, because I don't think you're, you're scrolling on your phone.
Yes, I am.
Mrs. Rodriguez, that is the ultimate insult.
I'm listening to you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for putting it down. So needless to say, you wanted teachers to listen to you when you were a Brockton student and you were struggling and as, by your own record, you were not a great student. You, you caused problems, and now you are in the, I believe, the prison guard? Correct? Or you were?
Correction officer retired after twenty-four years.
A correction officer. So you're a correction officer. You want to be respected by your people. They want to be respected by all of you.
Everybody's respected.
But giving them a two, giving them a two percent raise is the opposite of respecting them. So I'm asking you, as a resident of Brockton, as a former employee of Brockton, and a parent of two children that graduated from Brockton, very high up, by the way, that hold very great jobs, please respect the paras that support the teachers. Give them more than two percent.
Sherri Westover will be the last speaker, but on the will of the committee, we have a sixth person. Do you guys want that individual to speak?
I need a motion in a second.
To allow all the folks that signed up to.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Gomes, probably seconded by, I'll give it to Mrs. Sullivan.
Hi, everybody. I want to start by thanking you all for being here, and I hope that you really, really listen to us, because I don't think that you, that any of you really understand how dire this situation is. My name is Sherri Westtaver. I'm a special education paraprofessional here at the high school. Did you know that there was recently a survey conducted through MIT, and it showed that the living wage for a single adult to live in the Boston area for 2025 was just under sixty-four thousand dollars a year? I don't even come close to that, and that's with working extra here at the school, summer, vans, whatever. I have some severe medical and autoimmune disorders, and if it weren't for my adult son that I had to have come home to help me, I would definitely be homeless. Because unfortunately, I can't support myself alone, which is truly, truly sad. I have a few questions that I would like to ask all of you. I don't expect any answers, but maybe it will give you a glimpse into what we deal with outside of here as well. So please listen and let it sit in. Have any of you ever had to cancel a doctor's appointment because you can't afford the copay? Or not picked up your extremely important medication for your illnesses because you can't afford it? Have any of you received disconnection notices for your electricity or your gas? Have any of you ever had to decide between buying food for your family or paying your rent? Electricity or gas for your car? Because I have, and I do, and I'm sure all of the people in here do as well. It's an awful, awful position to be in, especially with illnesses that require a lot of doctor's appointments, medications, and days off. So you offering us two percent with our health insurance that has gone up thirty dollars a week or so is a complete and utter slap in the face. Us paras are the lifelines to these students at school. We love these kids and would do anything for them. We take their good days and bad. We take their abuse and their love. We're asking for something that brings us closer to a living wage. You're offering us two percent, which is, which is a representation of the disrespect that we are shown. These classrooms could not run without us. We know that the teachers appreciate us and the work that we do, so now it's time that the school committee show us the same respect and appreciation. We are the ones doing everything that needs to be done and more because we choose to. We love our jobs and we love these kids, and we certainly have not been doing it for the pay. So.
Your time is up.
I'll let it finish. Go ahead.
Thank you. Please remember, we come to work every day and show up for our students. They need us, and we are always there for them, and we need you to now show up for us. None of us should be going home worrying about food or bills. None of us should have to work an extra two or three jobs just to simply try to survive. We deserve so much more than what you are offering. I would love to see any of you come into a city resource room or a life skills classroom just for one day. Come walk in our shoes, see what we really deal with, and then let us know if we are still worth that two percent that you're offering.
Tracy Fornades.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tracy Fornades. I come from South Middle School. I am born and bred in this city. I went to schools here, my children went to schools here, and one of my children works in the classroom with me. They've already spoken to you. I want to speak to you, and I want to speak to the people that are watching us. I hope you hear what's happening here. The last time we were here, we were told that we would come to an agreement that we were pleased with. That agreement was due today. It was not given to us. We took time off of second and third jobs to be here today. So that's more money coming out of our pockets. That's the last I'm gonna say about that. I thank you. As a parent who had children, who had to go to ask for help from other people because teachers were too busy, it was you that they went to. I thank you for coming in every day and taking the abuse that you take, and not looking at the abuse, but looking at the child, loving the child, being the fabric that holds the school system together. We are exactly that. Hold your heads up high. Don't listen when people say, well, this is a stepping stone and you could get more education. We've already had education. We got it in this city. We are the people that every single day go to what looks like war to the untrained eye and come back every day. I thank you. What you do, what we do, is commendable. To everyone that couldn't make it here tonight, we understand why. So I am going to ask to lean on parents, teachers, others who are fighting for their contracts as well. Stand with us. Come with us. Be out there. Be in here. Lean on them. Call them. Make sure they know, not only is it important to us that we have a livable wage, livable, we are not asking for a crazy amount of money. Two percent? Two percent and still make less money than last year? If that's what we get, no one would go to work making less money after a raise than they made the year before. You are asking us to take a pay cut and to get abused and to stay at work every single day. It's not that we couldn't get different jobs, it's that we don't want different jobs. Respect what we do. We respect your families.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Tillyani. Before she goes.
Thank you. So we'll start with item A, the teaching and learning report, and tonight we'll start with the student representative report. I'm excited to welcome tonight Robbie Moyes.
Good evening, Dr. Tillyani, Mr. Rodriguez, school committee members, and distinguished guests. My name is Robert Moyes. I'm the 2025-2026 student representative and a senior here at the wonderful Brockton High School. A little bit about me, I'm the senior class president, captain on the football team, and member of the band. I would like to extend gratitude to the school committee for having me. I would like to say thank you to Mayor Sullivan, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Vega, Mr. Gomes, Ms. Oliver, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Azak, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Tillyani for having me as the Brockton High School student representative and giving me the opportunity to speak today. Moving forward, I would like to share the highlights of our school thus far. So first, the athletics and volleyball. Starting with our exemplary volleyball team, the Lady Boxers are paving the way towards a school record with their eighteen-one record, and they had this unit today. I believe they broke the school record. Yeah, we clap for that. Formerly nineteenth in the D1 standings and definitely have gone up after their projected win. We can't wait to see them in the playoffs and can't wait to see how far they go. Moving on to athletics for football, the Brockton High School football team is coming off a big win versus Waymouth, and will be traveling to New Bedford this Friday. They're working hard on and off the field and bringing the influence to the youth as they travel to the Angelo Elementary School. Here, they read to and inspire the first and second grade students. To be noted, our quarterback, Marcelo Semedo, is leading on and off the field as he was nominated as one of Brockton High School's Student Athletes of the Month. The band and football team join together with the cheerleaders to continue a tradition within the school of our rolling pep rallies. Engaging the students at lunch, we see a vibrant atmosphere as we build the energy for the upcoming games. Just recently, the volleyball team had the opportunity for their pep rally representing more sports within the school. As you can see, school pride has been a reoccurring theme within the school and will continue to be as a senior class council works to engage students in the school. Hosting our annual senior sunrise, where over three hundred seniors, woke up at 5:00 AM, by the way, participated in a nostalgic morning. Two of our seniors, Emma Gomes and Marlese Wagner, were interviewed on local news stations talking about this event and spreading the positivity. We look forward to the first-ever homecoming game at Brockton High School on November 1st, creating a new tradition for generations to come. The theater club is working hard to produce yet another state-of-the-art performance with a strong record in their competition pieces and packed crowds in the Brockton High School Theater. Students are excited to perform Love by the Bull on December 5th and 7th, so stay tuned for that. There's been a lot of clubs that have been making a really positive impact in our community, and the one that I decided to reach out to was the Outreach Club. They've been working hard to engage the city of Brockin'. This past Sunday, they collaborated with Blessings in a Backpack to fight clothing insecurity, and for the past few weekends have been putting, putting work endlessly to make a true impact in the community. The Brockton High School is hosting its annual trunk retreat on the 29th in the spirit of the Halloween season. Clubs and sports will have their trunks set up with candy for the younger generations to come by and safely enjoy the upcoming Halloween season. Brockton High School students have also been able to meet with colleges and career professionals at the Career and College Fair. Two college fairs were hosted by the school with such schools as Princeton, Tufts, and MIT in attendance. At the Career Fair, hundreds of students spoke with career professionals. On the top of college fairs, over two hundred students from Brockton High School recently took a trip to the Reggie Lewis Center in Boston for the HBCU College Fair. Over one hundred of those students received on-the-spot acceptance. On-the-spot acceptance. Dayletters of Acceptance will be hung in the office by our one-only Mr. McCaskill to showcase the accomplishments of our Brockton High School students. Our CTE programs will be choosing student experts of their CTE program to showcase to upcoming students and parents the opportunities Brockton High School has to offer. They're calling them influencers, and they will travel to schools, guide open houses, and exemplify the career and technical education at our school. Now for the student overview, I want to thank the members of the school committee and Mayor Sullivan for being so thoroughly invested in the community. This school year has started off with a strong sense of purpose focused on providing opportunity and evoking a strong sense of school pride within the Brockton High School community. The staff and teachers at Brockton High School are an immense support to students, making sure they are safe, inclusive, and supported in any way possible, creating a family-like atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. I'll open up the floor to the members if they have any questions to our student representative. No questions?
No, not a question, but just a statement. A little bit, whatever. Oh, I had, oh, he's putting the thing over there. Just wanted to say thanks for being, bringing homecoming to Brockton High School. I think a lot of people is extremely excited for November 1st, because I was jealous when I heard about it, because we didn't have that when I graduated from Brockton High. So definitely, it was fun going dress shopping with my daughter. She got her tickets yesterday, so thank you for bringing that. I know a lot of surrounding cities and towns have been having it for years, and I was always wondering why Brockton High didn't never had it, but thank you. I think this is a great idea, and the students are definitely having fun and very excited for it. Thank you.
Of course, and that was really something I wanted to bring to fulfill the Brockton High School experience, because they miss out on it at the end of the day, and I think it'll be a really good night to remember.
Anybody else? Just want to let you know something. As our student representative, you have a voice at this table, so you can ask the questions as all of us elected officials do. You represent the students, so feel free to state, I know you don't want to state for the whole meeting, but, but you do have a voice at this table and advocate for your peers. So whenever you want to take that opportunity, the chair is always here for you. All right? Thank you. Superintendent?
All right, that was a pretty tough act to follow, but I'm going to do my best. I'm excited also to start by highlighting the amazing things happening in the district. So this week is STEM Week and fifth grade students at the Arnoan kicked off the week with a brainstorming session for their invention convention, where they are making plans to solve issues in their own community. The Downey started its STEM Week celebrations early, hosting students and families after school last week for an interactive experiment, where they got to see chemical reactions close up while creating their own elephant toothpaste. At the Angelo, fifth grade students completed a STEM challenge where they used only verbal communication to build a Lego set. And moving on from STEM Week, but staying at the Angelo, the Gators have begun their annual Fall Friday tradition of welcoming members of the BHS football team for in-class readings from the Boxers. At BHS, students and staff observed World Mental Health Day with a full day of events, including informational tables featuring resources for students, as well as peer mediation training that empowers students to support one another and creates an additional pathway for students to seek help when they need it. Finally, the Brookfield welcomed published author Rachel Calabresi, who not only read excerpts of her book Sammy Starts Soccer to Third Grade Bears, but also left behind a copy of her book for each one of them to take home. As part of their new college and career speaker series, Champion welcomed Brockton native April Jordan, who now works as an attorney to speak to and connect with students about her, how her educational experiences started her on her career path. Throughout the school year, Champion will welcome accomplished individuals to speak about their experiences and offer guidance to Champion students who are thinking about life after they graduate. South recently welcomed a wide range of professionals from the community for its career day, giving students insights into career opportunities and pathways. Self also recently welcomed members of the Stonehill College Men's Basketball Team for their annual Stay in it to Win it event, which is all about promoting the importance of both showing up to school every day, but also staying in school and graduating so that students are set up for success in later life. Over the years, we've enjoyed a great partnership with the Children's Museum of Easton and most recently, that has meant welcoming the Children's Museum into our very own classrooms. Through generous funding from the museum, made possible by a grant from National Grid and additional support from the district's Title IV funding, every kindergarten classroom will receive an engaging visit from a science educator. During this hands-on experience, students will explore the concepts of waves, sound and light through interactive investigations. The visit culminates with a burst of creativity and fun as students make two classic childhood toys, a kazoo and a kaleidoscope to take home and share their learning. These photos are from the visit with kindergarten students at the George earlier this month. I want to congratulate the BHS marching band, which this past weekend made its first ever trip to UMass Band Day. Band members got to meet and spent time with peers from schools across Massachusetts before playing alongside their peers and the Minuteman Marching Band at the halftime of UMass football game versus Buffalo. The trip was made possible thanks to the tireless efforts of BHS music educators, who were on hand to support the trip that departed early morning on Saturday and returned well after dark. But also thanks to Keshis Law Group, which provided the funding needed to support transportation to and from Amherst. If you've made your way past the main office here at BHS since the school year began, you may have noticed the eye-catching new floor mat with the Boxer logo and message. It's a good day to be in Brockton, but it's an even better day to be at Brockton High. The mat was designed by BHS senior Eunice Kamau, who worked with professionals at Matter Services during her internship over the summer. I want to extend a big thank you to Eunice and to Matter Services for making this project happen. And while Eunice is in her last year here at BHS, her message will resonate with students and staff long after her time here has ended. I also want to acknowledge the Brockton students who have been taking part in our first ever Brockton Fire Department Youth Academy over the last several weeks. This program has given students a chance to explore the wide variety of work our firefighters do to keep Brockton safe. They've learned how to provide lifesaving aid like CPR and the Heimlich maneuver. And of course, they've had the chance to explore the skills and techniques of firefighting, like connecting water lines to fire hydrants and using hoses and fire extinguishers. I want to thank Chief Nardelli and firefighter Peter Riordan for being the ones to initiate this partnership. We are so appreciative of this opportunity for our youth to learn more about the fire service. And thank you to our own Dennis Gennich for the support getting the pilot program off the ground. I look forward to giving you updates, but I can already say that the pilot seems to be a success. I also wanted to express my gratitude to Dr. Karen Spalding, our assistant superintendent for teaching and learning for grades pre-K to eight, who visited the State House earlier this month to give testimony in support of the science of reading and high-quality instructional materials. Dr. Spalding testified for lawmakers on the Joint Committee on Education, highlighting the incredible impact the science of reading and high-quality instructional materials have had for the youngest learners in our district. Including significant gains in the amount of students who are reading at or above benchmarks for their grade level. Of course, there is much work to be done, but I think it is important to note all the progress that has been made here in Brockton. And I appreciate that we are being looked at as an example by the state. Finally, just a few reminders about opportunities for BPS families. First, families are invited to complete a survey from food service partner Chartwell's, the School Meals Report Card, which is an opportunity to offer feedback on the quality and types of school meals available to students that will help guide future menu choices. To learn more and access the survey, visit www.bpsma.org/foodsurvey. Second, member ASAC's Winter Coat Drive is ongoing and still accepting submissions from students in need. Coats are available for BPS students up to youth size 18. You can submit a request, which will be filled if supplies remain available by visiting www.bpsma.org/coats. And finally, as Robbie already mentioned, BHS's annual trunk or treat is coming up next Wednesday, October 29th from 5:30 to 7:00. The event is free and open to students and families in pre-K to five and will feature candy, snacks and prizes. Everyone is of course encouraged to wear their costume. Please note that the event is dependent on dry weather. And just as an introduction, at the last meeting, you did complete my evaluation for school year 24-25. So it's time to go ahead and start thinking about my evaluation for school year 25-26. So I just wanted to give you a reminder, like a refresher and a preview of what I'm thinking about for this year. So again, the evaluation process is a five-step cycle. So you guys just finished number five, and so now we are back to number one, where the school committee approves my goals and focus indicators for the year. So again, the way it works is that we, there's three goals, a district improvement goal, a professional practice goal and a student learning goal. And then from this list of focus indicators that fall under four different standards, I'm to choose six to focus on. So these are my suggestions. You're not voting on them tonight. These are for you to sort of peruse over the next few weeks. And then I will ask for your input, either by email or in person or at our next meeting, so that I can present them to you for your official approval. What I was thinking for the district improvement goal was to continue to enhance efficiencies and implement audit findings in order to improve district operations, increase transparency and ensure ongoing compliance. So we did make a lot of gains last year. But as you remember, I often would present the findings of our many audits and let you know how we were progressing. We have not finished all the work that is yet to be done, and so I do want to make sure that we continue to revisit those audits and recommendations and that we are moving forwards towards improvement. So for example, the financial audit, I think this was even talked about at the last meeting. We do have a pilot ready to, that we've worked on with the city regarding the warrant approval. And that was something that was part of the financial recommendation. So again, I don't want to forget that those exist. I want to make sure that we are continuously working towards improvement. The professional practice goal I was thinking of was to support a district review of systems, policies and practices relative to DESI standards and indicators that highlights our strengths, areas for growth and recommendations that promote improvements and advance equitable student outcomes and experiences. So we are actually slated for our district review with DESI this year, so this is a process that we will be, me and my team will be facilitating and coordinating this year. DESI will be coming in and reviewing similar to the way they did a few years ago, right before we agreed to an MOU. So they're coming back again and we, they actually would have come next year. We asked them to come this year as this is the final, so that we are poised to next year revise our strategic plan. So we're coming to the end of our current five-year strategic plan. So by doing the district review this year, then we can enter into the strategic planning processes for next year. So most likely that would be my professional practice goal next year. My student learning goal would be to provide additional intervention and support to schools that have been identified by DESI as requiring targeted assistance. As for the indicators, so again, there's 21 indicators to choose from. And again, I'm very open to your thoughts and suggestions. I was thinking for this year to focus on standard 1C, which is assessment, that looks at not just MCAS, but the other methods of assessment that we are utilizing to to look at the data on our student learning. Standard 1E would be data-informed decision-making. So not only do we want to have a variety of assessments, but you want to make sure that you are looking at the data in a meaningful way and then implementing interventions. So those two kind of go hand in hand. Standard 2E is fiscal systems. That probably looks familiar from last year. I thought it was important to keep that one from this year because we still have work to do there. Standard 3B is around sharing responsibility. Standard 3 is parent engagement, so this specifically is about collaboration with families and community stakeholders. Standard 3C is then communication, establishing two, regular two-way communication with our families and community stakeholders. And then standard 4D is continuous learning. And that is specifically about developing and nurturing a culture in which all of our staff members from our school leaders to our teachers to our peer professionals are being reflective about their practice and using our student data in order to adapt their practice and improve results over time. So as usual, these are posted online, but I will also send these to you so that you can think it over. Again, the entire list of focus indicators is here, so if it is the committee's will that I focus somewhere different, I am very open to suggestions. That brings me to the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll open the floor to the members for any questions or comments relative to the superintendent's report and objectives. Mr. Vega?
First, I just want to give another shout out to Dr. Spalding. I think, you know, having our school leaders sit in front of the state's leaders and bring their expertise to the table is just an incredible statement for Brockton, so thank you. So we talked about, and we had a presentation about this time last year, where we talked through DIBIL scores. And now we're able to look back on that data and say that more than half of the students who were reading below proficiency levels are now at proficiency or higher. So we're seeing, you know, that benefit. When do you think we would get to see the next round of that? And do we have any sense of what's coming down the pipe?
Yes, so actually, we were planning a presentation for tonight on MCAS. And then we actually thought it would be better to not just focus on MCAS, because as we know, MCAS is a lagging indicator lagging indicator and shows how our students did last year. But what is very important is our formative assessments at the beginning and our interim assessments at the beginning of this year and the baseline they set, because they inform how we instruct for the rest of the year. So we have completed our first round assessments or we're completing them. And so our plan was to bring a full data presentation that is not just focused on MCAS, but that focuses on the full data picture. Because as for even our educators and our school leaders, we all know and recognize that that is one data point and that we need to make sure that we are looking at the whole picture when it comes to analyzing data on our student performance.
Thank you. In your, in talking about your evaluation of goals for going ahead, you mentioned 3B and 3C, which are both different forms of parent engagement. Just, and I know this is a work in progress right now, but what are some of the things that are on your top of mind for ways that you might enhance parent engagement?
So yeah, that is definitely a great question. There especially, I think this is important right now, given our current landscape. So there are things that we are doing now to ensure that our families are feeling welcome and supported. And so, for example, this past weekend, we held a family preparedness clinic. We are trying to do a lot of interventions and support and really making sure that our families are getting what they need. So we're thinking about just the overall context for how we are supporting families in the current environment. But then also, you know, communication is always an area where we could improve. So thinking about what those communications look like district-wide. So for example, I know that many of the schools, they obviously are communicating with their families. Many of them have active Facebook pages, Instagrams, and so thinking about how we're making sure that we want all the schools to be able to demonstrate their individuality, of course, but also making sure that we are having touchpoints at all of the different schools and that each family is getting an experience that is, that feels similar and inclusive and feeling like their school is a place where they can be part of the community. So thinking about that, also thinking about what are the right district communications? So last year, we started something called the Brockten, which is specifically for, from me to staff. But thinking about how we're doing something like that, and then of course, we have the active Instagram page. But thinking about how we're getting important information out to all families from a district level. So what is appropriate to come from the teacher level, the, the school leader level, and then the district level? And being thoughtful about it, not just overwhelming families with communications, because that's not helpful either. So how are we being very strategic and intentional about what communications come when and from who? Because it's not just more that's better. I think it's making sure that families are getting the information they need when they need it.
Thank you. And last question, you also had stated in, I forget what the letter assignment was, number assignment, but ongoing fiscal evaluation, right? And then also talked about the idea of continuing to look back at the audit recommendations and continue implementing them. One of the things that came up was, you know, obviously our financial oversight and ability to drill down on the numbers and get a clear understanding of where we stand at any given moment. Since that time, you and folks over at Open Architect have created a dashboard that we all have access to and can see data in almost real time. The follow-up question is like, when can we expect that kind of opportunity for our families and the general public?
That is a great question. I think I need to check in with Open Architects to see what our timeline is looking like.
So I've been in those meetings, but TJ is actually working on a program so they could do it like an open checkbook. So just like we have it with the state, so it's, my recommendation is citywide, not just Brockton Public Schools, because it's not just, this isn't a Brockton Public Schools, this is a city problem. So they're currently working on that, so I don't know what the exact timeline is, but I told them to get on it as quickly as possible.
And I appreciate that. I think it's important that we've established it as a priority for transparency. So thank you so much for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Any more follow-up questions or comments? Mrs. Oliver?
Just a quick question. I know there's been so much posting. This is an amount of posting I've never seen. Especially when my daughter was here and going to school and I, it's always something being posted on our official website and also the schools, I have so many of them. I wanted to know, how can we also put in multiple language? Because I know it's only in English and a lot of the writings all mean English, right? Pictures, you can understand what, what has been happening, but definitely trying to see if like also the message that you're putting with those pictures can also be translated in different language for our students and parents too. I think there's, I don't know if there's a music or something going on in the other room.
That's actually great feedback and my next step, once my goals are approved and my focus indicators would be approved, would be to come up with action steps. And so I think that would be a perfect one to follow up on.
Yeah, that'd be great. So like every family in every language can know exactly what's going on in school. I know that kids can read it to them, but just for the parents, I think it would be easier to just have it in a lot of language that basically it's in Brockton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Like, when you mean different languages on the school webpage?
The school webpage, like when you, like when they're posting stuff on like Instagram and there's like a little words around it.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Just like put in multiple language. So if people's following on Instagram, Facebook, it's not only the writing in English, but like, you know, Creole, Portuguese, Hispanic, Vietnamese, Haitian Creole, and just exactly what's happening.
We have the translate on, function on the website.
But not on social?
But for Instagram, I'm not sure.
And off of Facebook either, because I think of, yeah, I've noticed that it's not.
So I would have to check into those. I know that we upgraded the website last year and redid it, and that was definitely something that was important to us. But I think you're right that we need to take the next step and make sure it's part of all of our platforms.
Even the school individual too, for them to like, when they post stuff, to like just have it in different language would be great.
Cool, thank you. Any follow-up questions? Mr. Gomes.
More so of a comment. Mr. Vega and Mrs. Oliver touched on some of the things I had written down already. I appreciate how you actually take these feedbacks that we're giving you and make something of it. One of the things is going back to the audit recommendations, bringing it back and the fact that we're already looking at next year's evaluation. Also, some of the indicators that you've already selected, I made comments on them when I did this review cycle. The community engagement was one of the things that I said we could work on that. And the fact that it's up there, whether it's from my evaluation or you deem it necessary, I truly appreciate that. And it says a lot of the work that you're doing and your commitment to the work as well. So thank you.
Any follow?
Yes, that was actually a comment and more than one. So yes.
Thank you. I mean, this past evaluation, I participated in numerous evaluations of the superintendent, but this is the first one where, as the vice chair of actually compiling all that stuff together. I know it's an election year. One of the things that I haven't seen until this year was actually members from the committee working together to compile that. That's when we talk about transparency and making that. Everybody's voice is heard from this committee when we do the evaluation. So whoever's here, if I'm here, make sure that that committee is formed with three members so they can compile that and, and make sure that, that it's done in a, in a great way. One of the differences between this evaluation and ones in previous is that the former superintendent's evaluations was based on a, on a formula that gave the superintendent a raise, which I'd never agreed with. And I'm glad that that was taken out, that the evaluation is a more transparent and cut and dry at this point. So thank you for that. And thank you, all the members for participating. You guys got it real quick because I know back in the heydays, they used to hunt us down to make sure we got it down in time. And thank you, Gomes and Oliver for participating and me and putting it together. Next is item B is the discussion of potential voter substitute teacher salaries and schedules. Superintendent?
Yes, so you'll see enclosure two is a memo that you have seen before that you voted on. And so this is the most updated version. What you'll notice here is that the permanent sub-rate is calculated using the schedule one, step one of the BEA salary scale. So we've updated the memo to reflect the current rate. We also added both sub pair professionals and food service substitutes to this memo as there are also substitutes. We added our early college facilitators to this memo as they are similar to the subs. And we also increased the retired administrator substitute rate as well.
Any questions from the members? Go on, what? Mrs. Sullivan?
So the substitute pay for, a substitute for one day is 135?
Correct, from days one through 50. And then if it's 101 or more days, it goes up.
Okay. And then, so that's what they were getting before, right? Wasn't it what we presently do, 135?
Yes, actually it is. That was the last memo too.
I think that's, yeah. Okay. So, so if we upped anything, we, we can afford it?
Yes. Actually, and yes, we had increased the retired administrator rate in this memo just to reflect what we're actually paying.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we were below on some of them?
Yeah, so it was reflected as $200 a day, but we were paying three, last year, 350 per day. And that's where when we have, so for example, when we didn't have a principal at a school at the start of the year, we hadn't hired. So a retired administrator came back and served as the principal or an assistant principal. So that's their daily rate.
Right, right. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions, concerns? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the substitute teacher salary schedule?
Second. Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. Show of hands. Unanimous passes. Item C is MSBA update?
Yes, so we are moving along. In fact, it's ramped up quite a bit recently. We had several different visioning sessions at Brockton High School that the community was invited to. So it was over the course of several Thursdays. Session one was focused on the learner profile and student life. Session two was on teaching and learning considerations. Session three was on space types, features, and guiding principles. And we had several different stakeholders who were at these meetings and being led by our, our OPM in looking at what, what school life looks like now and what we would like it to look like in the future. At this point now, that feedback has been synthesized by our OPMs. And we are now in the process of having workshops. So we're looking at specific areas. So for example, there's a team that's looking specifically at CTE and special education. So those are with members of the high school and district leadership. And also, we have a team as well that, the district team that is looking at all of the feedback that the community gave. So looking at, okay, now what does this then translate to as we're looking at the building moving forward? And as for the public meetings, those are continuing. I believe we have one this Thursday.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments? Ms. Oliver, Mr. Vega, you know, I know we all serve on that. If you guys want to say anything, do I want to put you on the spot? Mr. Vega, go ahead.
What time is the meeting tomorrow?
It's at 2:00 PM.
Is there a possibility like a Zoom?
It is a Zoom meeting, yes.
Is it Zoom? Okay. Can you send me the link so I can join?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
2:00 PM. Forward it to you. Mr. Vega?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment that like, the work that we do is very important. It's not always enjoyable. It's not always exciting, but these meetings are incredible. And, and so like as, as a member of the committee, as an educator, like to be and to sit in these, to sit across from, from parents, to sit across from students, teachers, members of the community, and for all of us to get excited and start dumping our ideas out there and to have an organization as expert as the one we're working with synthesize that into a narrative, it's, I'm very excited about where Brockton High could be in the next few years.
Any more comments, concerns? Well, I'm excited being part of the building committee and seeing all the hard work and how many hands are in this project to make sure that it's being fruitful and, you know, to address all the needs of the district. And it's a big task. I can't wait to, I know I won't be here when the schools are completely built, but hopefully I get an invite for a tour. But yeah, it's, it's, it's one of those, like Mr. Vega, it's fun to be in that space to see the level of engagement from the community, parents of students and educators across the board on this massive project. So looking forward to it. And next is items to refer to subcommittee. Do we have any? We will be scheduling a FinCom slash accounts. No? Well, we'll talk. I'll, I'll notify everyone via email. Next item is consent agenda. Will the committee?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion was made. Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Gomes. And I will read this into record. A is the approval of minutes of the regular school committee meeting September 17, 2025. B is the approval of 2025, 26 home education requests. C is approval of career technical education report. D is acceptance of human resources notifications, appointment certified, appointments non-certified, personnel actions, leave of absence, resignations, and retirements. Show of hands. Passes unanimous. Next we have is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Seeing none. New business is discussion potential vote of the bid review subcommittee meeting held earlier this evening. Mr. Gomes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So earlier today, we had our bid review subcommittee meeting. Myself, Mr. Vega, and Mrs. Oliver were present. Principal McCaskill did a brief presentation on the two organizations that submitted a bid to provide additional resource and support for 105 students of ours at the Brockton High School. The recommendation was the youth guidance organization. It was voted favorably unanimously by this, by the subcommittee. And it is now brought forth in front of the whole committee for a vote. Question, comments, concerns?
So I have a question?
Yes.
So you said there was two bids?
Yes.
Okay, so which bid was taken like the lowest or?
It is the lowest, yes. Significant lowest. Plus, the bid is for three subsequent years. And if you look in the packet, the second bid, which was recommended, remains constant throughout all three years. The first one goes up by over 100 grand the first year and then another 60 to 100 grand the second and third.
The second one seemed like the better?
The best option, yes. And they, to give them.
The money?
Yes. Money-wise and also to give them credit, they did their background research on both organizations. And the second one seems to be well-deserving of this RFP.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
No? Motion?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the FY 20, yeah, or here. FY 2026 school bid number 26001 for supplemental services program for Brockton High School, CNT number 26001.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Gomes, properly seconded by Mrs. Oliver. Show of hands. Unanimous, it passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is school safety and security for our police liaison. I can't see. Lieutenant?
Greetings, Superintendent Tahiliani, Mr. Vice Chairman, school committee members, and those in attendance. First on the list, Thursday, October 9th, there was an incident at the Arnoon School at dismissal. We can call it a road rage between parents waiting at the car pickup line. It began as a heated argument, ended up with two men and a woman fighting, with one man assaulting the other with a box cutter. School police responded swiftly and an arrest was made for assault with a dangerous weapon, carrying a dangerous weapon on school grounds, assault and battery, disorderly conduct, and disturbing the peace. The second male involved faces similar charges. Luckily, there were no serious injuries reported. We want to acknowledge the staff at the Arnoon School. Certain staff members, they intervened. They took steps to minimize the further violence and they also brought the children back into the building until school police arrived. So Sergeant Livingston, I believe, wrote an email to the superintendent praising the staff for their dedication and commitment to the safety of their students. All parties involved were trespassed from school grounds. And a 51A was filed on the parents involved in the incident. So word of the wise, we expect our students to behave. It's another thing to have the parents involved in something like this at, at dismissal. Last Thursday, about 3:15 PM, a Brockton resident was driving on West Elm Street and reported that a student was observed wearing a mask, carrying a bookbag, possessing a firearm, and pointing it at a resident. So a 911 call was placed. School police immediately responded and stopped the individual. The weapon turned out to be a toy gun with an orange tip that was removed. And the child was identified as a 13-year-old who was not a student in the Brockton school system and hadn't been for a few years. We contacted the parent and the toy gun was taken away and disposed of at the parent's request. And the parent retrieved the child, but not a student in our school system. Late last week, Brockton Police responded to a child in crisis in which actions by city police were taken, including a report, a 51A, and an ongoing investigation. Related to that incident, a school committee member was anonymously alerted to inappropriate images displayed on social media. The superintendent was informed, promptly contacted school police. Sergeant Livingston initiated a handle with care intervention. And for those that don't know, that includes counseling and other services made available to the student. All of the evidence was gathered and was forwarded to the investigating officer for the continuing investigation into the source of the school media posts. That's still under investigation. Yesterday, Brockton High School teacher was driving past McDonald's on Belmont Street after dismissal and had several rocks thrown at her vehicle by juveniles outside the business, damaging the vehicle. School police responded. At first, we couldn't identify the suspects, but we retrieved video surveillance footage from McDonald's. And as a result, two juvenile suspects were positively identified and criminal charges will be taken against the two. Also, the parents of those juveniles were also notified. That was off school property. That I believe it would never take place on school property, but that was at the McDonald's. So moving on, there's been some other issues school police have handled. We've had a few juveniles in the past few weeks who have run away. A few have returned on their own and school police had assisted in the return of others. One of my other duties, being in charge of the Brockton Police Drone Unit, tomorrow afternoon, we'll be using the drones overhead at the Raymond School to collect and study real-time data on traffic conditions, specifically to monitor traffic flow and congestion which spills over to Oak Street in dismissal. So we'll be trying to come up with solutions to the congestion with Captain Picaro, the traffic commissioner. That could be the beginning of doing the same thing with other schools. On a lighter note, on Wednesday, October 29th, open from grades pre-K to grade five is the Brockton High School annual trunk of treats celebration. For those that don't know, children go from open trunk to trunk of vehicles that are decorated to receive Halloween treats. Once again, school police will participate, will contribute a vehicle for the event, and as usual, provide security for the event. Last but not least, Sunday, November 1st, Marcianno Stadium will host the last regular season Brockton High Football Game. And the security measures that we have in place will be consistent with what we have arranged for at previous games. I've seen some videos from other municipalities, very disturbing ones, at some of the situations that happen during the football games, fights and so forth. We here, we have an outstanding safety record so far this year, and we expect the final game to be no different in that regard. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Lieutenant. Open the floor to members. Anybody have any questions? Mrs. Sullivan?
Thank you for the presentation. These safety, security reports are really helpful. So thank you. Great job.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to ask you, the trunk of treat, one that you just said, was that the Brockton High one that you'll be there?
That's at Brockton High, correct.
Okay. If another school has one, would we still have school police there?
Well, we certainly, if, if we have another school that arranges it, we certainly can contribute a vehicle and, and security as well.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Vega?
Thank you for the report, Lieutenant. And this is a minor thing. What's a 51A? You mentioned that in your report. I don't know what it is.
It's, so if there's an issue with a juvenile, they undergo some extreme crisis event, then DCF, Department of Children and Families gets involved. And that's a pretty much standard protocol when we have something where a child could be in, in some sort of danger. And that's when we discuss this with DCF, Department of Children and Families. In this case, as I mentioned about the, the activation of Department of Children and Families when we had that road rage in front of the Arnoon School, again, traumatizing not only to the students at the school, but obviously to the students that were involved as being picked up by the parents. So we feel as though Department of Children and Families should be involved with that.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Thank you, Lieutenant, and your staff for doing a wonderful job. I know you guys are really busy over there and hopefully moves forward quickly with the new staff that you'll be hiring and growing that department.
Yeah, we have a great team. We appreciate. We appreciate the support, Mr. Vice Chairman, and with all the school committee members as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda is announcements. Any members of the committee have any announcements? Mr. Vega?
It's less of an announcement, more of an apology. At our last facilities meeting, I let my frustration show and raised my voice. And that wasn't the professionalism the community deserves. And my concern for the Boys and Girls Club project was genuine, but my tone was not appropriate. I take full responsibility and want to apologize to my colleagues, to everyone who attended, and to those who are watching at home.
Thank you. Apology accepted. It's a touchy subject. We all support it. You know, we're just trying to dot our i's and cross our t's that weren't done and making sure that this project happens sooner than later. But my apologies as well. I know your passion, my passion, sometimes gets a little clash, but we're able to have a drink after and then shake hands and talk after, so. And when people say that we got into a fistfight, there's no fistfights. We never even touched, we had more hugs than arguments, so just say that that way. So, thank you for that. Any other announcements?
Yes. Thank you, guys. I actually appreciate that. Thank you for apologizing. Thank you for apologizing. And acceptable behavior. Not saying that it doesn't happen. It does, we all lose it sometimes. But I appreciate you coming out and apologizing. And I believe there's always better ways of approaching situations like this. But things happen, you know? But I appreciate you guys coming back to your senses.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I just, I like to give the Davis PTA a big shout-out. And I'm not going to be biased, but I am going to be biased, but we have the best trunk of treat in the city, and that's in Ward Four. Sorry, Kevin, but we always outdo it. So thank you to the Davis PTA. We're going to have that this Saturday. If any members of the community want to come to make sure that you are a member of the Davis School, so which is a very population there, so. Next under item is, Mrs. Sullivan, sorry.
I know the Downey School is having one, too, but I'm not sure of the date. But it's on there. They're having a trunk of treat, I believe. Downey School?
Yeah. There's a lot of trunk of treats going on in the city. Every school does it, but, you know, I just like to acknowledge the Davis.
But I just wanted to say one other thing about the-
Yes, it's posted yours.
Since we're addressing that, what the lieutenant said about if parents are fighting in a parking lot of a school, the children are all watching. And even anybody's behaviors publicly, the children are watching. It's so important. We wonder why the kids are fighting. Why are the people fighting? Just talk it out. Try to get along for the kids. Do it for the schools. Do it for the kids, for Brockton Public. And try to talk it out instead of, like, giving people, you know, hits and stuff. So, we can work it out if we just all work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Next is the executive session. Next item, the school committee will go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, 21A, Section 2, to conduct grievance hearings pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement between the Brockton School Committee and the Teamsters Local Union, number 653 International Brotherhood of Teamsters School Bus Drivers, Item 1. Item 2 is pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 30A, 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and so the chair so declares, I do declare Brockton Education Association, the BEA, Brockton Education Support Professional Association, Bespa, Independent Brock Administrative Assistance and Technical Employees Association, IBAA TEA, Teamsters Local Union, number 653 International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Transportation Custodians, School Police. That was long. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Oliver, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. We will not be returning to open session. Meeting adjourned.